Before they come back.
Get one.
Board works.
That's what the door was talking about.
There's a couple items in there.
We're, we're, no way, Matt.
Which one are you under?
Board works. Board works, case three.
Okay.
Case three.
Okay.
Okay.
The trash service and the phones is what June had it, right?
We got this generator and switch?
That's the parts I'm looking at. Two five thousand, one's on top, I'm not so concerned about at this time. But generator and switch is hundred twenty grand if you want to fit the city hall to run on its own, like the police station or the fire station.
What's the need for that then right now? Do we use this, do we don't use it for emergency shelter failure, or are we using that?
We could, we could, if we cut it. And the thing is, what about last year, Gene, it's been down about three times?
Oh, it went down two and five times this year. But last year it was down maybe once. I remember one of the last year.
I, I was on one.
It's, it's never, I mean, most times it's up and down at all.
Okay, so you guys tell me what you want to do.
So we can scratch that, that's what we're talking about.
If you want.
Possibility.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's up to you guys.
I think at this point we're.
I think at this point we're scratching.
If you decided, if there was money left for the switch in, to have, where you could back up a generator to it, rent a generator and hook it up, that'd be about fifty thousand.
That's something that we can think about, but now we're gonna do the whole thing.
Yeah, I'll just bring it to you guys, so you decide what you want to do.
So we're crossing off a hundred and twenty thousand. Okay?
Let's hear that, that's a hundred and twenty grand. Hundred and twenty, hey, we're almost there now, aren't we?
No, we're not there.
We're not either.
We're halfway there. We're halfway there. We've got to be halfway there.
That was my idea, too. Right there.
What's the ADA?
Well, four hundred thousand is halfway there, right?
That is too many. We have to have a plan. If we do not have a plan, we are not in compliance with the federal government. If we do not get in compliance and have a plan and start working on this, we will not be eligible for any federal funds.
So this is just to write up a plan?
No. This is to actually incorporate the, the sidewalk ramps. And that is about seven hundred and fifty dollars per.
Corner.
Six to sev- sixteen hundred dollars per corner.
About eight hundred dollars per corner. A single intersection will cost you about thirty-two hundred dollars. So how many? By two thousand and eighteen, they expect communities to have every one of them done.
And that's not going to happen at twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
You know, we're just gonna take, it's gonna take two hundred and fifty thousand a year for us to comply with the federal regs. I mean, so, so you know what we're talking about per corner? Have you lined out a plan on where the, the most critical corners would be for that? You know, I mean, where, where's the most volume, like, you know, people walk in, or? In other words, anything that comes up for replacement, we've done. In other words, if somebody replaces a sidewalk, for example, Teresa Ball, we found money to put two corners in because the sidewalk was done. Right, but, so I mean. And we know, we know what our main thoroughfares are. In other words, what we've done for the, this has been in place for several years, when the city of Greensburg's done nothing. So what we're using for catch-up is inter Lincoln Street, we've done every one of them with federal aid money. Well, any new construction would be done this way. Any, anything that we're gonna redo, we're gonna do this way. So this twenty-five thousand though, where's the plan, I mean, do we have, what intersections do we have planned to use that on? If we got the money? Do we have, do we have a plan in place identified? Yes. We can cut that down. In other words, we, we're doing, what we're basing our plan on, we're basing them off the traffic counts. In other words, we can't count pedestrian traffic. You have no way to count pedestrian traffic. So what we're using, Jamie, is road segments for vehicular traffic and trying to comply with that.
The plan, Mark, has been drawn up this year.
Correct.
To do where. And we're starting on the business thoroughfares, which might work the Broadway.
Mm-hmm.
And surrounding.
Some of those are already done.
Those are tails around square.
Yeah, that's been done.
In other words, what helps us is, the state highway has some of our busiest thoroughfares.
And they, East Main Street?
When they resurface Main Street, they've redone all of them. In other words, what they want is every time I surface a street, if I pave a street, they expect me to do every intersection handicap curb cut at the same time.
We can't afford to do that. We can't.
And I'm not to use MVH money, you're supposed to punish me general fund money.
So how do you figure twenty-five thousand come up?
Yeah.
We had to put a number in. If you want an honest, honest number, we'll put two hundred and fifty thousand.
Over the next, uh, since two, till two thousand?
For the next six years.
Six years. Thirty thousand.
This is, this is a year, right here. Twenty-five thousand a year. So how many areas are you planning on paving this upcoming year?
I can't, I can't, you, I don't have any money this year at all. No, he's saying with that twenty-five thousand, how many areas are gonna get?
For next year.
So you take thirty-two hundred? I can do approximately eight intersections.
But how many do you plan on doing?
At least, we'll do eight intersections.
Bill's trying, Bill's thinking that, how much are blacktopping are you gonna do? Because you said if you blacktop the streets, you have to do.
That's what they want you to do. And that's what Endo's doing.
We can't do that. But we can get.
I can't do it, Bill.
We have a plan. And twenty-five thousand a year.
At least we can make a dent.
But he said he has a plan.
He has a plan.
Yes.
We have a plan.
That's right.
Okay. So, okay.
I mean, so we, we gotta detail out which intersections are done, which ones are done.
Well, we are the plan. I'm talking about the blacktop.
Every one of them, when we had our, our engineering intern for a month, he went through and he has every intersection in the city of Greensburg. We have every intersection, we know which one is ADA, which ones aren't. We're keeping all that on GIS. Every time we upgrade one, it's reflected in that chain.
So, Mark, where is our plan? What intersections are we gonna do first?
You'd have to ask Gary what we're gonna do, because he's him and, he's the one that's worked on the plan. But in other words, we're just gonna do, next, starting next year, if we have money, we're gonna start to do some.
But believe me, the twenty-five thousand, ain't enough to.
In other words, what I'm saying is, you need a quarter of a million dollars a year.
We're just squeezing by and say we have a plan.
We're just saying we got a plan and we're gonna show that we can do some.
For next year?
In other words, we're just trying to keep, do enough to keep the beds off of. If we have a, if we have a plan in place, we have money to do some of that, what, are there any kind of grants out there available that we could tap into to help assist us? That's what I was, just mentioning. We got a letter this past week, they suspended all call for projects statewide. All transportation grant money had dried up. They're not even accepting, you know they had a discussion with the TIP board about submitting for a project. They're saying they're gonna reduce the transportation funding statewide seventeen percent a year.
That's if they're getting money, right, and others come out.
So they're actually gonna take your money away. They're taking the grants away, Jamie.
But make it clear, this twenty-five thousand's a drop in the bucket, it's not near enough to do what needs to be done, but it's part of our plan, and we have to have a plan.
So we keep twenty-five thousand there, where do we cut it from? Because we just asked, we gotta cut eight thou- eight hundred thousand.
You just cut a hundred and twenty up there, right above it.
Well, but that was, that was a hundred and twenty that wasn't there last year, this is twenty-five that wasn't there, Matt.
And this has to happen.
Salaries are increasing.
I don't care. What you do, this twenty-five thousand has to be in here. No matter what you do, it has to be there.
I'm just struggling with where.
Does it have to be twenty-five thousand? Because I mean, when we don't have money, we don't have money.
Well, I guess as long as they're not gonna, we're not gonna apply for any grants, then we don't have to be worried about being federal compliant.
Mark's saying, I just asked, Mark, he's saying there's no grants out there? There's some, but they're not taking any projects. So in other words, if you're gonna, you cannot apply for a grant now, because they're not gonna accept them.
And, and Mark, even if a grant did come up, we're not eligible if we don't have this plan.
Correct.
We're done.
In other words, when I go to my next quarterly meeting for the Vandelia Road project, they're gonna want this.
Yeah.
What are you infusing on, Helen?
Well, he says if we don't have a plan, you say we have a plan.
Well, the plan to spend the money.
I, I'm just wanting, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, all right, we gotta find a place. I don't know that there's clear direction on this intersection's priority, this one's a priority. You know, maybe we've got an idea on there, I don't know. I'm wondering, twenty-five thousand, does it have to be twenty-five, can be twenty, can be fifteen?
Yeah, that's.
You know, that, that's where I'm coming, that's where I'm coming from here.
Well, I think trying to save five or ten thousand dollars on a project like this is really cutting corners, based on what determines whether we get any grants in the future to do different repairs or improvements.
I'd, I'd be sitting in a whole different position if somebody was sitting there saying, this intersection's gotta be changed, this one's gotta be changed to base off these counts, these numbers.
Jamie?
That's, that's where I'm, that's where I'm coming from. Jamie, I can give you a spreadsheet that shows all four hundred intersections where I need one point two million dollars in the next six years, if that's what you want. It's, it's, it's not just that, but I mean, you're, you're, you're gonna give me this based on traffic flow, too, and I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, based on, you know, pedestrian traffic, or maybe, you know, where do we, where are we gonna have the most likelihood for, you know, we need some handicap accessible ramps and things like that, where do we? What I'm saying is, for six years, you need one at every intersection in the city of Greensburg. Every intersection in six years, they wanted it every intersection in the city of Greensburg. They didn't want that last year? They've wanted it since the ADA was packed, but they've never enforced it. So everybody's ignored it. So now they're enforcing?
I mean, we've got, we've got something in it.
The state, the state just adopted the new ADA rules.
In other words, when I go down to Seymour for my Vandelia Road job that we're wanting to build next year, that we've got a grant for, if I can't say, here's my ADA plan, here's what money I've allocated, they'll say, if you don't have an ADA plan, we're just gonna pull your project and you're out. In other words, you have three years in your program, Bill, and we wanna do the North Corridor that they talked about, if you can't fill them an ADA plan and where you may gain, they're just gonna let you fly.
So your twenty-five thousand is the ADA plan of every time you do an intersection?
No, no, no. It's to actually put intersections in. It's either construction cost, it's not for any planning grant, it's strictly for construction.
Well, guys, let's move along, let's, uh, let's say twenty thousand.
Let's move it to twenty, that's, we're gonna cut five.
We got something going.
I'm not saying we gotta cut it, I'm just.
No, we are, we are. Let's move on.
I'm trying to understand.
Animal control, move back to ten, move back to sixty.
Are we finished with board?
No, no, I'm on the board works.
Okay.
Move back, animal control to sixty-five thousand, let's take them ten thousand off.
To sixty-five, okay.
And move the phones and the contract service back to the same, back to five, uh.
Make it twenty thousand?
Take the five thousand dollars off of.
Off the phones?
Yes, and, and move the other back to five thousand, the same issue.
What about the contractual services?
Yeah, now which?
That's what I'm talking about, move it back.
Was it back to five? Oh, I think I meant the phones.
Move that back to twenty.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Take out the five thousand on both of them.
Our thirty-five thousand then.
See, that'll, that'll be there. Uh, no, on, back on page one. Move back to page one.
It is a four.
Forty-five.
I got ten, hundred and thirty, hundred and thirty-five thousand.
But that's leaving twenty thousand in there.
Huh?
Whoever's.
You got five thousand, five thousand, there's probably twenty thousand in five thousand, twelve, ten thousand.
Ten thousand on the end.
Oh, ten thousand.
Thirty-five thousand.
All right, on page one, what are you talking about? Take workforce comp back to a hundred and nineteen thousand.
On page one?
Yeah.
Hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, that's taking on, uh.
What is, how much?
Fourteen thousand, sixteen thousand.
Okay.
Take it back to what, June?
A hundred and nineteen thousand.
Okay.
Uh, we're going to take the, on the.
They dropped the rate, um, so I think you can go back to twenty thousand on that, just looking at what was left last year.
Back to twenty.
You need it back to forty-two?
They had forty-two last year.
Yeah, I know, but they, they dropped the rate that we paid in, uh, we dropped it to five. I don't want you to ever sit there and, well, I'm just looking at what we have up, or what we spent last year was, um.
Drop it to thirty-five?
Yeah.
Would that give you a good cushion?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
That's separate, oh, that's, yeah, that's twelve thousand from what's in there now.
And it, it might be that they'll, you know, this will be, be coming back further, but we won't know until down the road. Um. Only that, only yes, I don't think. Let, then a catch-up here.
Four hundred thousand?
Now, what it is, now, what it, no, I always clean the other ones, and what we've done is we've been able to cut there, well, when they cut the budget, I invert it back to you guys, and I think that whole four hundred thousand off of there. I'm watching, right now, I have a hundred and, about a hundred thousand dollars left in there. And that would pay for the year. So, I'm hoping to get by, I told you, that's what's talking about, we want to be paying in on this whole portion and on this whole portion, and we're gonna put in the fixed costs for us. And that's going to watch that and see if we can, for the next full months at least, I'll put in like fifty-seven thousand. And I might be able to, now, okay.
Um, on the, oh, wait, I.
Or I may have to find a hundred thousand, or fifty thousand, or twenty-five thousand. You see what I'm saying?
So if we were from six to seven thousand this year?
Our portion.
Our portion, okay.
Uh, it, it usually runs about, yeah, six to seven. So probably, I'm guessing, but I'm, probably you'd be able to cut that by about two hundred thousand, but I don't wanna do it yet.
Okay.
Um, on the.
I'll come back to.
All right.
On page two, the line number one point four, this is OAS five. We're running, I've got fifty-six percent left in that line item, and there's some rather, there's extra pace at the end of the year, both the line and certi- certifications, that sort of thing. So I would hate to cut too much out of it, but I think you could take it back to the hundred and twenty-five thousand, we had led me for two thousand eleven, so that would cut five thousand off of that.
Don't cut anything that you don't have some, some other line to feed it from.
Well, that's what, that's the reason why we would cut that.
Well, but still, I think that's still. Yeah, but I don't remember cutting.
That I leave other places for that extra money. And we're, we're shaving it.
So what?
I'll take the next.
Signals for the ways that.
But I, I'm guessing.
Go to ten thousand dollars from the city, under city council line item, three five two, that one a ten thousand dollars.
Three five two. Six.
Why do we?
I'm running, I'm running really low on.
You're only eighteen, seven, four.
The only thing that makes that go up would be the cost of the energy, right?
Well, and, and we've added a bunch of more lights. All those downtown, we've been adding now. And if you get any more new additions.
Oh, you're, you're putting everything into that.
Um, you're getting in lights, I, I use lights and.
You're gonna have the lights from Main Street, too, now.
Yeah. You're, you're gonna give it to more lights. See, I'm at eighteen percent on signals.
What, you're gonna get a flash out, did you say?
I've got sixty-two percent on the lights, then I go up on the lights.
So why she went up ten thousand?
Well, move the.
Or, oh, okay.
Street lights would.
Street lights would up five thousand.
He was asking about signals.
Take five thousand off of the signals and see if that does it.
Is that the energy cost for your traffic signals, June?
Hi?
Signals, is that your energy cost for traffic signals? Is that what that is?
I've got lights and signals.
Well, one.
Well, you've got two sets.
Yeah, you've got street lights and you've got signals, traffic signals, flashers, fire sirens, I mean, so that's some of those others.
But signals, you're talking electricity to upgrade them?
That's what it costs this.
That's what I mean, you got a hundred and twenty for the street lights, and twenty-five for the street lights, not maintenance on them.
Take, move the signals back to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's what you said.
And, um, the only other thing that's, that's large increase is.
Three plus.
Is perp is up seven thousand, and just looking at this, we've already paid forty-seven percent left, and I've got two quarters to pay yet.
I would, I would just.
That wasn't eaten a lot, that's what I'm saying, because we've taken over a, instead of a third of Gary Murray's, we're doing a half, and now we've taken over all of Belinda's. And I don't know what the increase, I mean, the proposed increase now is one point five percent, I would hate to touch that seventy-five thousand for two thousand and twelve.
How would that, how, how would their?
It's a percentage of your salary that goes into retirement. Once I know more of the, um, the races, then I can, I can look for any excess off, but until then, the percentage goes up every year.
What about the five thousand for insurance management policy? Three forty-one?
It would be LED, which is cheaper, all right, but still, it's an average, yeah, it's close. But, no, ARA, they didn't increase, so it still should be ninety-two hundred, right?
Three forty-one.
Three ninety-two.
Three forty-one.
Yeah, I'm looking at that one. I have thirty-four percent.
What, or?
Yeah. And that was a half a year. What about that silver over half a year?
You say ARA did not increase?
Yeah, ARA did not.
So we can.
What comes out of two fourteen in this line is supply, is that one up?
Well, when, that's, that has a lot of things to come out there, if, I mean, when the mayor's budget runs, there might be stuff out there.
Okay, the mayor's saying that ARA did not increase, so there's three hundred dollars there.
What's he?
Three ninety-two.
Line two, three ninety-two.
You can, you should make that nine.
Ninety-two hundred?
Uh-huh. At the second page.
Just, just take five, but in that, just nothing, none thousand.
I thought it was eighty-eight hundred.
So just make that nine thousand.
But I'm not absolutely sure.
Take five hundred from that.
Well, we paid last year.
I really thought it was eighty-eight hundred.
We paid eighty-five, thirty-five last year.
It's not one up.
This year.
They are.
So we, we paid five hundred last year.
Per capita.
Five hundred last year, it was nine thousand, thirty-five dollars is what we put in.
That's a per capita.
And we spent eighty-five for every five.
That was for old Jim.
We just have to take, take five hundred out of everything.
Think, leave a nine.
Yeah, when we spend in, uh, account two point four, then.
I mean, two point four last year. Almost everything, there was an eight percent one, that's a twenty-seven hundred.
And what about this year?
This year, four thousand.
Take it back to three thousand, just take that thousand out.
What's that?
Uh, Mr. Williams.
Two one four. Two one four.
Yeah, on this Wellness program, we was talking about that before we started, um, you said that you've got about twenty-five, you're taking advantage of that?
Yeah, I would have to look to see exactly what I paid out this last, well, this is the last time we've done it, um, July would've been the first month that we sent out any reimbursements, and I think that I had.
Yeah.
I wanna say it was a dozen, fifteen people, maybe, but there's probably, you know, twenty-five that are signed up that said that, hey, I'm gonna do this, but then only somebody committed the requirement.
Why don't we take thirty times the max?
Well, that's what I did, I took thirty times three hundred and sixty dollars a year, that's ten thousand eight hundred, and we're budgeting fifty thousand.
Well.
Yeah, we had.
The only, the only thing I will say, and I, we don't have to do this, but we talked about every two years doing the, um, healthy life screening for the employees, and we did not do that this year, that was something that was budgeted last year.
I'm like, we can cut that some shit out of it, too.
But you see, we're, we're.
Hundred and sixty dollars, that's a tiny.
We had about seventy percent of employees that took a pay.
I was gonna say seventy-five times a hundred and sixty.
They're not paying it.
Twelve thousand. Twelve thousand. We're budgeting fifty thousand dollars.
All right, so twelve thousand plus, what'd you say, what'd you add, ten thousand?
Ten eight.
You know, you're looking at.
So if we dropped it to twenty-five.
Let's drop it to thirty.
For thirty.
That gives us a little cushion.
Yeah, cushion, because there could be some who are waiting till they're.
Not all for this, but if they're not gonna use it.
Yeah, you're right, so if we drop it to thirty, okay.
What? We're paying all of them.
City's paying all of it, more cities.
So we reverse the utilities as well.
So well, we split it between the city and the water and sewer.
And Wellness, we, the city's paying.
We make our half twenty-five, and their half twenty-five.
Okay.
We're saying we, we'd probably cut that budget down to thirty, and then maybe we would have half, and they pay half, that's fifteen.
It'd be fifteen.
Yeah, but we gotta discuss about the half and half. So you don't have that a.
Well, but half those employees have nothing to do with it.
Um, most employees that are paying are out of utilities right now. They're not even.
So, I mean, we, we could make pay for half of their employees, even if we, I think we could safely take it down to thirty and then negotiate that.
Yeah, then we'll see what, let's take it to thirty, and make it down to.
And I'm saying.
In the Wellness program.
There we go, awesome.
Put a DP inside that.
That cell phone stack, and they've always spent, um, twenty percent of that somebody shared, or the ten thousand dollar, would that be cut in?
Yeah. That's all these bands.
Ten dollars in the first one.
I have a ten dollars a year per person.
Ten thousand.
How many people are on? It's forty dollars. Ten dollars a week. Ten dollars a year.
A week.
How much?
Uh, it's ten dollars a week, yes, so.
How many people are using this?
How many people you got, you said your department heads?
Probably probably a dozen.
Twelve?
Well, yeah, right now, the um both investigators are getting getting it. I don't know if Stacy has plans to use it for any sort of other on-call at all. So the straight department will use it for on-call. Is there three total investigations?
Well, it's not four hundred and sixty-four then.
Yeah. So I would say probably just one.
I'm gonna say twenty, say we got twenty.
Two thousand.
Next. Yeah, let's go down to seven. You don't say that. Twenty, we're not using here twenty.
You want it down to seven dollars?
Why is it being used so little?
What, which one are we cutting down?
Cell phone five and.
To seven?
Yeah.
So then we're gonna cut that by three.
Put a per hundred next to that. Yeah. H H, H squared.
And I don't think any might use it.
I've started taking advantage of that.
What's that? Cut that sucker out then, unless unless you've got something good for them to go.
Most of them, just like you, Bill, you used it the first year.
Very first, what do you mean, when we went?
We went through that thing over.
Got initiated or whatever.
Well, you went through the IAC deal, took different classes.
Barely done, nearly. Someone went to code three thirty-one?
Well, that's 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 all those code books I got back there, but nobody uses.
Oh, it's actually.
You gotta be a lawyer to understand.
Yeah, we didn't do anything with it.
June, what about uh master policy, you want that back to the lawyer, are we?
No, we're.
Right now.
We're dead.
That was, yeah, that's.
I have thirty-four percent now.
Okay.
And I've got this year. I've got.
That didn't change.
Probably, I guess, probably twenty thousand. Or so, and I'm gonna have to find it in all the other funds for this year.
Well, did we get the vehicle?
She left.
She was thinking about it, I never got her answer. There's twenty-five thousand.
No, we have.
Twenty-one thousand five hundred.
Yes.
Twenty-one thousand five hundred.
I think your insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
I had a good bet, it's gonna go down. Thank God that our damage on our all our vehicles are on last year's property liability. Barrier definitely.
But it's all insurance with every person.
Oh, right now, I'm gonna knock on wood, I said, because right now, our health insurance is running really well, so.
Yeah, it is. And I just, I just. Cause that's where I need to go. Make up the next.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
Yeah, the hitters take care of it.
Okay, you're at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
That's counting a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
You should take sixty-two five off county councils, that's what that was. We've got a long way to go, don't we?
Yeah.
Long way to go. Let's get our department heads back.
It's fine, we can get our uh.
Mark, you're looking sleepier than Scott, why don't you go next? Doesn't matter, let him go. Come on, Scott.
We're asking if he's got any vehicles given up. There are, yeah.
He's got to be a police department.
We got four hundred and thirty-two thousand to go, yeah.
If you was holding up a year, you might come up with something else. Billy, make this a big one, Scott, you have to have the extra. Go ahead, I don't want the police department, here we go. I don't want too high here.
So your hazmat techs and E N Ts went up a thousand?
Yeah, that's because we've had additional people take that training and get those certs, so. What we hold there is the exact numbers, is the number of personnel that are entitled to those certs. Volunteer clothing allowance goes up fifteen hundred. We're anticipating bringing some more, we just brought five volunteers in. We changed our volunteer program where we're requiring them to do twenty-four hours on shift, on station, a month. So they come in, they work out, you know, whether it's a twenty-four hour shift, whether it's three day, three eight hour days or whatever. But that helps us supplement the staffing, then we've got our team, cause we understand that we're not gonna get any new additional staff, so we're trying to build the the combination side of the department up. And with that, again, we'll be looking at adding a few more next year to hit that number up. Right now, we're sitting at about six to eight. And then between there, between twelve and fifteen. And then again, each year tries to continue to grow that, grow that number.
First, do you get for E N T, Scott?
How much?
How much? Two fifty. Two fifty?
Currently, it's uh E N T two fifty, for hazmat tech two fifty. For rescue technician, which is your rope rescue, confinement space, that kind of stuff is two fifty. If you have all three of those, then there's a two fifty incentive to get all three of them, to make a total of a thousand.
How many E N Ts do you have now?
We will have twenty-four.
Twenty-four E N Ts?
Twenty-four out of thirty-one.
Wow.
Well, with Doug just retiring and Brian Fry coming in, again, that's a plus one, that's a plus one.
We've got our own named service. To create money for the city. I mean, if we got that many.
Is it supposed to rain tonight?
I hope not. My question for you, which we needed.
You got got it right there, twenty-four of them. We've never had that many.
But we now require that, to the point.
Right. With those contracts we have. How many paramedics, do you have any paramedics?
I guess we have to rename those.
They run basis.
That's what you have to say, rename those.
They run basis. Wow, you wanna generate money.
It depends on who you talk to, some people say you don't make money running that kind of stuff. I've not, I mean, I've never really said that in any numbers, because, you know, the current service we have is divided by the county. Had no cost to us, so.
They're not down with the county.
You don't like, you don't wanna mess with that one, so, you know, because there will be expenses, but, you know, getting another truck and that and stuff. So I've never even ever looked at at that option, so.
Scott, the big one's twenty-five grand overtime. Reason you've only spent eight percent this year is because everybody wants to wait to the end of the year to grab it?
We honestly, whenever we whenever we have overtime that's incurred, it goes into comp time. And then again, at the end of the year, if if they're at a, well, if they get to the point that we set, we automatically buy it back, which we just bought some back uh this week.
It's just not reflected.
It's not reflected up here, that there was probably a hundred and one hundred and twenty, one hundred and fifty hours here that may that were bought back. Again, with that, I mean, you know, but last year, is that the first year we ever did overtime? Is this our second year or third year?
I think this may be our.
This is our second or third year, you guys probably, I mean, probably remember, we we added this because we never added before. We did everything purely purely with comp time, and we had people floating up at the at the level where we had it, except four hundred and eighty out of the comp time. So.
You used to take.
Yeah, so so we got into, we we put put in the two hundred and fifty, and the last few years, we've been able to buy a lot back and and work the guys to the point where, you know, we've been able to get those numbers down. Currently, we don't, we don't allow anything over two-fourth. So we've cut that number totally to half, and I would say probably twenty-five percent are probably setting on less than fifty. Now, probably.
Couldn't we even try to give them time off with pay without giving them overtime?
We tried to give them an opportunity if if we can work it, but again, we have minimum staffing levels that we try to maintain. And, you know, we've had a few people off on sick leaves and and stuff like that, well, that hinders being able to get the time off.
Against this, with these uh reserves that you're putting in, will you still call everybody in? Or will you count the reserves that show up? Because they may just, they just walk into plant, it's three hours, right?
Right, once, once we get the numbers up some, with the volunteers, get them where we want them to be, train wise, that kind of stuff. It could be a situation, you know, as long as we've got stronger than, and we know what those shifts are. You know, if we know we can pull four or five guys during the daytime because they live locally and so on, or or work nights or whatever. Yeah, we could do a call in just the volunteers' room, instead of making a general on all call for everybody to come in. We could call just one shift, which would get us a third of the guys and the volunteers. We've had a couple of times where we've actually called the next shift in and picked up three of the volunteers that came with them to supplement the staff. So it's actually starting to work well for us. But again, the next year's gonna be the real test, especially if we can get some more in, get them trained up and so on. Uh, the overtime, I would not be afraid, uh, you know, just from looking at the numbers that we've used and and where we're at, comp time was. Uh, you know, I'm good with cutting that back to fifteen.
Okay.
I mean, what do you think, David, I mean, looking.
We quickly did that, so we're.
Okay, I mean.
Grab this.
Yeah, get that done quick.
Big S next one.
You cut the overtime back to fifteen?
Fifteen.
Two fifteen thousand.
By ten down, cut it by ten.
Cut it by ten down.
Yeah, two fifteen, yes.
And on your uh E N Ts, you you haven't spent a dime of that five thousand, what's the deal?
We we pay that at the end of the year, that comes out at the end of the year.
Same way for the investigators?
Same, yes, yes, all the specialty pays, all the specialty pays off come out in the same. The only thing that pays half is mechanics and quality lines.
We pay those half. Well, they're basically working on their gear, so it's not.
That went at five thousand dollars, and again, like what PD was saying, we're we're looking, working right now, we've got the equipment to put a laptop in one of the engines. And that's what we were looking at doing is, over the next couple of years, getting laptops in the engines with all free plane information, drawings, G I S, photos, all the call information. Hazmat, M or uh, yeah, M S D S sheets for, you know, a file, so if we pull up on something, have a chemical, don't have the M S D S sheet, go to the computer, pull it up and so on. Again, I I would, again, I understand things are tight, you know, we can't necessarily continue to 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 add new programs, so, you know, we can put that, put that back to the five that it originally was.
Okay.
That that.
Do you reference?
That was an increase, that was an increase that we had made, uh, but that was before we knew we were gonna have to cut the one point one up. With the with the Usher physicals, the breathing tests and so on, as Stacy said, the company itself are gonna increase, you know, five to six percent. And with adding the volunteers, the volunteers need those tests also, so we're actually adding your num- numbers and plus the prices going up. So I, right now, I don't know that I would be interested in in changing any of that. Fuel, you know, fuel went out, I just, again, took a whack at that, out of two thousand, not knowing where we were gonna be. You know, right now, I'm about so about forty-two percent left. This number does not reflect this month or last month's fuel bill, cause I did not get it in to to get paid, so.
We better not.
It's gonna be close, but, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year, we see, see where fuel prices are gonna be, you know, we can maybe adjust that.
Tornado sirens.
Tornado sirens repair went up, uh, the initial, the initial three sirens that we have, the Whalens, uh, Corner Store, Old Danny Express and Connerosa, uh, were put up under the original, the first Mass administration, so they're getting some years on, and they're starting to show. We've already, just this year, uh, put about four thousand into them, because the speakers go out, they're electronic, so they're speakers. And two of the sirens, we were at hack, hack speaker class. And I had people say, hey, I I don't hear the sirens quite like I did, and we got to check them in the speaker for that. So, you know, looking at that, making sure we have funds there, right, this time, we we pulled it out of other maintenance funds that we had to to cover that.
Where you go on, Scott, these thirty feet air packs? And when I look next, we have a lot of pretty good sized budget and a lot of money left out there, capable, I spent twelve percent, where are you at on that this year?
Right now, the only thing we really paid out of that are some uh maintenance fees for the breathing air system and stuff like that, because again, we didn't know where we were at. You know, with air packs, I would say we could probably cut three grand out of that. You know, the thing we've got coming up, though, is.
We were gonna spend a ten grand this year, only seven next year.
That that's that's my goal, either that or we could flip it and take three out of this year's and give me the.
No, we're not doing that.
And the only, and the only thing we've got coming up is, is if you remember, we got the grant for the airbags. The air bottles have a life for them. So we're looking at starting here within the next year, so buying X number of bottles a year, so we don't have to come up with a hundred air bottles all at the same time.
You only buy two, then you should be throwing by four or two.
They're only good for fifteen years, you haven't they passed certification.
Okay. Yeah, we have about thirty-six hundred.
We're dropping that down to seven.
Yeah, cause Devon said we had about thirty-six hundred left this last year, so. And I talked with Mark Bowen, and he said that we could probably back that up.
Okay.
What'd you have in that, in the rescue hand?
Well, this year, it's kind of uh different, because we had actually gotten a grant last year for turnout here. Pulled five thousand out of rescue and hazmat to pay that, cause it was, you had to pay it upfront and then you reimburse. And we spent it last year, got the reimbursement this year, so we actually had five thousand extra in that fund. That's why there's actually more money in that fund right now than we originally had in it starting off the year.
But on the average, how much should that be?
Again, the rest of your hazmat.
Did we cut it to ten? You still have ten, without that five thousand, you have ten thousand.
You would still have ten, so.
We cut it to ten.
Again, yeah, I mean, we we can, we can, we can go back to the ten on that.
Rest, uh, two forty-two.
Two forty-two. Trainings wanted, the mayor has kind of talked to me about, I have, went to some other departments and checked. Currently, we budget twenty thousand. With that, with with the number of volunteers and stuff that we have, that gives us about five hundred dollars a person for training now. And some of you may say, well, that's a lot. We had, we were lucky enough to have a D P C grant through Homeland, this is by Homeland Security, pay for the guys that take the hazmat tech class. That class is six hundred dollars a person, and we were able to get the grant to come in and pay for that now. Uh, you know, that being said, you know, for, you know, everyone else who's who's, you know, made cuts, um, Devon, where was I last year?
You cut five thousand out of the last year, and you basically spent the rest of it, so out of the twenty thousand.
So we were about fifteen.
Yeah, cause we had moved, it looks like we had moved an additional two hundred and eighteen dollars, so you spent fifty thousand two eighteen.
This year, you spent about three.
But again, a lot of these, we we've tried to hold on to, because again, we don't know if we're gonna need to try to turn money back in to where Jim, I know she said, well, good, she's got probably forty thousand somewhere, and I just moved to other places, because she's gonna come up short, because she's over the top stuff, I would say. We tried to be favorable with it. We was to cut it back to seventeen at this point. You know, cut three grand out of it for now.
All right, out of training.
Yeah.
Okay, that's two forty-four.
Yes.
We're we're currently trying to work some deals with Honda, to where they'll provide some trainings for us. That's kind of a dream we had with the previous person that we were contacted with out there, and Jared Wodowski, the new guy, is looking that he's gonna try to do the same thing.
Yeah, you pay his postage?
Yeah.
His postage?
I utilize the postage for the postage reader, and to buy postage, they come in.
I come in, I need ten.
So. You need to leave that five hundred.
So we need to leave it?
I use it out of his budget.
Oh, yeah, that's a budget.
I use it out of his budget, cause I don't have.
Out of. Scott's budget?
Yeah, for, whereas in any of the budgets, I use.
You need to leave it.
Okay, so we need to leave it.
Yeah, but take out the legal advertising.
The three hundred.
Take out the three hundred for that legal advertising, cause I'll.
What about the cellular phone, I thought those were included on there?
They have it, they have.
I have.
Odense.
Okay, three truck cell phones.
And and while you're on it, go back to the page, be. Four.
Four.
And legal advertising in the police, that thousand.
What hundred?
Three thirty-one, take that out of there, and they can just pay for those ads out of the other.
So if we get one, bring it down, we pay it out of.
That's a thousand.
All right, yeah.
They can, they can pay it out of the council and the works. They come, they come in, they won't even get them, usually.
Take it out completely.
Well, not me, but they come into my office.
Again, in most cases, I'm gonna only spend fifty bucks out of that.
Well, it's just.
Only thing I do is wherever I act, when I advertise for a higher profit.
Right, but they can just take it out of those other two budgets that they.
There's a one down the line, Jane, uh, Scott, the handheld walkie-talkies, get five grand in there, you only spent thirteen percent.
Again, we're holding off with the anticipation of one eight hundred megahertz radio costs two thousand five hundred dollars.
But you've been giving that.
But we've been getting those from E M A, but right now, Stacy's saying they're not. But we've been getting those from E M A, but right now, Stacy's saying they're not gonna get any more.
You don't have enough yet?
I don't, handheld wise, I've only got seven, so, uh, plus, we've got, coming up this year into next year, what's called rebaming, or narrowbaming, where we take our old radios, which now run off of the one fifty-four, three eight-five frequency, and we have to narrow that down, because they're trying to open up more spectrums for more people to talk, and we're just, we're not real sure at this point, we've bought the programs to where we hopefully can do it, get, do it ourselves and save some money, but we don't know if all the radios will do it or not, because we've got some older radios that may not be narrowed out of. Plus, with the eight hundred radios that we have gotten, just like I said, where there's a standard handheld radio, it's about seven hundred dollars, the eight hundred megahertz are twenty-five hundred dollars, also, when there's a problem with one, the price is all, is also about triple to get them working, so that's why the, uh, I think, I think I increased the maintenance.
Station maintenance, no, the station maintenance.
Uh, the-
Maintenance on radio and papers, yeah, it's three twenty-three.
Maintenance on regular papers, yeah.
I put it up a thousand, because, again, some of the radio-